I mean, the, the dog seems right.
[laughing]
Welcome to the regular meeting for the Board of Trustees for April 8th, 2025. Is there a motion to open tonight's meeting? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Patino, all in favor. Meeting is hereby open. You'll see that trustee Nell is appearing virtually. Her location has been properly noticed. You'll also see that trustee Rosenberg is appearing virtually. And trustee Rosenberg, are you appearing due to extraordinary circumstances? Is that the right word?
That is correct. They are extraordinary.
Okay, so we are all here. And can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. It's great to see all the seats almost filled. So it's always, one of the great parts of being an elected official here is when we get to do things that are, recognize people who've made a difference and who've really saved lives. So what we have tonight is a presentation that we're going to make to some people who do this extraordinary work every day. And I'm sure it's never ordinary to them, but this is what they do every day. And we can't say to them enough, thank you for your efforts, that you are an important part of Dobbs Ferry, and we value your services and your dedication to the village. And as part of that, we have certificates of appreciation that I'm going to read out. Actually, I'm going to do that over by the microphone. And if you are here, and I call out your name, come on up. And you can say a few words if you like. And I already apologize if I mispronounce the last name because I'm the worst at that. So I apologize for that. Chief, where's the chief? Want to come up, chief? Do you want to describe what happened on that day, the events that happened?
I defer to the, for the run scene.
Why don't you call up?
Swap. Line up.
Why don't you introduce yourself? Tell us who you are, and then you can describe what happened.
I'm just pulling up the email.
In the meantime, tell us who you are.
Yeah, so my name is Swapnil Pandya. I am the captain of the Dobbs Ferry Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Just going to recap what happened on Tuesday, February 11th. On Tuesday, February 11th, the ambulance corps was dispatched to Ogden Firehouse at approximately 6:25 PM for CPR in progress. Upon arrival, our crew found a 36-year-old pole worker who was unresponsive in the care of our Dobbs Ferry Police Department officers. They were performing CPR, and prior to arrival of the police department, prior to our arrival, there was actually a civilian employee, or a civilian pole worker who took over CPR and started CPR immediately. Elizabeth Sweeting, who was the pole worker, is a resident of Dobbs Ferry. She saw this person go down, immediately jumped into action, checked to see if there was breathing or a pulse, didn't find any and started CPR herself. Other bystanders called 911, which our police department answered and responded to. The police officer arrived on scene, applied an AED, took over CPR. They shocked the patient once with no change. The time they were shocking our patient, shocking the patient, our crews Alessandro Cocking and Chris Graves, they both walked in as EMTs on call that night. They walked in, took over CPR. I think they shocked the patient two more times after that, and they regained pulses. So they actually brought this person back to life. They were clinically dead when they arrived on scene. So they shocked the patient two more times, they brought him back to life. They loaded them up in the ambulance. And in between them shocking and then packaging the patient for transport, we're fortunate that since the Ogden Firehouse was the pole house location, the fire department was down at the Embassy Club performing training and medical exercises. And they heard the call go out. And so Chief Giuliano and Police Officer, Firefighter Marin, both jumped in the chief's car, drove up to Ogden Firehouse to help us out. Phenomenal help because we didn't have our higher level of care available. So our Greenberg paramedics were busy on other jobs. They weren't able to respond in time. So while we were packaging the patient, Officer Marin, Firefighter Marin showed up on scene, and actually, he's also a member of the ambulance corps, so showed up on scene, helped his package, and jumped in the driver's seat to help drive while our two EMTs took care of the patient in the back of the ambulance. Patient was transported to Dobbs Ferry Hospital, where he was stabilized, and then transported out to Westchester Medical Center for further care. Happy to report that patient, about 48 hours after this incident, was actually discharged from Westchester Medical Center with no neurological deficits. So he's living a normal life. Doctors looked into what caused it and treating that plan, but completely fine, no deficits, nothing at all. So back to normal life, thanks to the actions of everyone involved. The one thing, the one thing I will mention is, I think that the key thing here is, one, early CPR, the chain of, chain of life is a big thing that the AHA preaches. So the fact that we had a bystander that knew CPR and started right away, followed by the quick response of our police officers who are always on scene before us or at the same time as us, that was key to making sure that there was even a chance for when our EMT showed up for this outcome. So again, it was teamwork by all, collaboration by all. And we, I mean, at DFEAC, we always pride ourselves with our working relationships with the police department and the fire department. We love our fellow first responders.
So thank you for that explanation. And I guess what you heard is it is a perfect collaboration between the Volunteer Ambulance Corps, the Police Department, and the Fire Department. So all three working well together, seamlessly together, and, and life was saved as a result of that. And we're not going to trivialize that at all. We do certainly, certainly thank everyone who's involved in that. And as part of that, we do have these certificates. So the first certificate of appreciation we have goes to Police Officer Anthony Muratari, who was there as part of the crew that saved him on, saved that person on February 11th, 2025. And he's not here, so I'll give it to you, chief. The second one that we have is to Police Sergeant John Broccoli, also for his efforts during February 11th, 2025. The third one that we have is for Chief Joseph Giuliano, for all the efforts that he did on that day. Should I give that to you? He advised us that he has a test today, and his final day of training, so. The fourth one that we have is for Police Officer Julius Dervionik. Thank you for jumping in on that. So we appreciate that. That was the one I was worrying about all day.
Ah, I didn't have it. No problem.
We also want to give a certificate of appreciation to Elizabeth Sweeting for her efforts on that particular day. I'll take that. Someone who's here, finally. So we have a certificate of appreciation to EMT and Captain Michael Marin for all the efforts that he did, and we want to thank you for everything that you've done. And we have one for EMT Chris Graves. Thank you very much. You want to say anything?
I'm okay.
People think it's easy until they get up here. Then they're like, ah. EMT Alessandro Cocking. Congratulations. Thank you. And Police Officer Dennis Buciani. So you went from being in the treasury here to saving lives. My god. Adding numbers, now you're saving lives. Here you go. So you got, you want to, you want to say anything? You guys, you want to say anything? Want to say anything? So I just think we should all give them a round of applause for what they've done. And let's get a picture over there.
Stand up.
Right, hop out of there. Hop, hop out.
I shy away myself.
Oh, not with us.
It usually goes to like the news guy.
Hey, chief, chief, swap, why don't you come on in? Don't be, uh, busting the engine, uh, right now.
What, ah?
What? Ah, swap, you know. I'm going to try to dive in. Okay. Now on to your more mundane things, such as the village budget. So is there a motion to open the public hearing to address the tentative 2025 through 2026 village budget? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Galen, all in favor. A public hearing is now open, and we're going to turn it over to Rob.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. We're pleased to present this year's fiscal budget, the tentative budget for fiscal 2526. Jeff did the heavy lifting on preparing the slides for tonight. And we have a little narrative that we're going to go through, and we'll take any questions that you may have as we move through it. So it's rather a long presentation. We'll try to keep it down for a few minutes. So Jeff, whenever you're ready.
Seven minutes, there are.
Yes, yes.
We're done, then.
Yes, yeah. Vote. Jeff, whenever you're ready. Thanks.
Okay. So we'll, excuse me, start with a summary of the 2526 budget. We are proposing total appropriations of $27,339,136 across the operating and enterprise funds. This represents an increase of approximately $802,000 over the 2425 budget. The bulk of this increase relates to some proposed equipment purchases and proposed employee positions in Village Hall and DPW. The proposed 2526 tax levy is $17,691,069, which represents an increase of $654,000, or 3.83% over the 2425 budget. The total taxable assessed value of all properties within the village increased approximately $169 million, or 6.78%, which has allowed the village to propose a 2.8% tax rate cut. The proposed tax rate is $6.66 per thousand dollars of assessed value compared to last year's $6.86.
So I just want to stop you there for one minute. So the, so our tax levy is, we've lowered that this year as opposed to last year.
So the tax levy is up, but because of the assessment, they're increasing.
Tax rates.
The rate.
The rate.
The amount is up.
So could you explain again to everybody the difference? And I do this every year for you, I know. Difference between the levy and the rate.
So the tax levy is the total that we're requesting. The tax rate multiplied by assessed value, and then divided by 1,000 is what the tax, individual tax bill would be.
Okay.
Okay? So in a couple of slides, we'll discuss what the tax rate reduction does to the average tax bill. And just a reminder, the above comparison is village taxes only, which accounts for approximately 21% of the total taxes in Dobbs Ferry. And as we will show in a few slides, the school district is about 68% of your total tax bill. So on this slide, New York State laws dictate how much municipalities can increase their tax levies from one year to the next unless the municipality overrides a tax cap. 2526, the village has proposed a tax levy, which we mentioned, which I mentioned, $17,691,069, which is compliant with New York State tax cap law. And as we discussed a moment ago, a tax rate of $6.66 per thousand dollars of assessed value. So the first graph on this slide shows the tax levy change for the past 15 years. Since the implementation, the village has complied with New York State's tax cap legislation. And once again, we're complying with the tax cap. We try very hard to balance taxes with the many costly but important services that the village provides, such as police, fire, road maintenance, garbage pickups, that our residents have come to expect. The tax, the second graph shows the taxable value over the past 14 years. The property tax assessment process is complicated and is handled by the town, by the assessor at the town of Greenberg. As you may recall, the town now completes a revaluation of all properties every couple of years. This year's tax assessment showed an overall increase in assessed, taxable assessed value. There are several reasons for the continued increase, including, but not limited to, the desire to live in this community and continued building and renovation work to maintain improved properties within the village. And that's supported by the, you know, the very strong issuance of building permits that we continue to see. So the uptick in property valuation has helped maintain a very stable tax rate, including some tax rate decreases over the past several years. The village continues to provide all the expected village services within the restraints of a cautious and prudent budget. So does the reduced tax rate automatically translate to a decreased tax bill? And the answer to that is not necessarily. Total taxable assessed values in the village increased 6.79% year over year. We took 10 random properties and calculated an average assessed value for those 10 properties of $935,400 for 2024. For 2025, those 10 properties had an overall average percentage increase of 3.85 to an average assessed value of $971,380. So you may ask, how can the average for those 10 properties only increase 3.85% when the overall average increase is 6.79%? So the answer lies in that those 10 properties had an assessed value range that changed with a high of 12.81% to a low of a negative 9.31%. And the hypothetical house with the assessed value of $971,380 would see a tax increase of $65.06. The house with the assessed value that increased by 12.81% went up $869. And the taxes for the house with the assessed value that decreased by 9.31 went down $1,124. Dobbs Ferry Village tax rate continues to be the second lowest of the River Towns villages. Over the past few years, we have seen a couple of the surrounding villages proposing possible overrides of the New York State property tax cap in their recent budgets. So far, Dobbs Ferry's board and administration has been able to avoid proposing a budget that exceeds the tax cap. However, the village continues to deal with aging infrastructure that may necessitate bonded projects and related expenses in the near future. This could require overriding the tax cap to pay for needed capital projects. In an effort to mitigate borrowing costs, the Board of Trustees previously approved and funded a facilities capital reserve. And the use of the capital reserve funds may reduce the amount of debt issued for a capital project, which in turn reduces interest expenses. As always, we continue to monitor ever-increasing expenditures and costs, and continue to work together to bring the residents a high level of services at one of the lowest tax rates in the River Towns. We continue to do so with this budget. So over the next couple of slides, we can, we'll look at some of the expenditures proposed. As you can see in the expenditures by type graph, employee payroll and benefits costs continue to be the largest expense to the village and account for 69% of total expenditures. When we look at expenditures by department, public safety has the highest cost, along with unallocated benefits, employee benefits. And then the bottom of the graph, the retirement system and medical costs remain the largest employee benefits costs, and both can vary significantly from year to year. We've talked over the past few years, we've seen retirement of some of the longtime village employees, and this helps reduce the cost to the village taxpayers. As those retirees will most likely be replaced by employee in one of the retirement tiers that requires a larger contribution from the employee and a much lower village contribution for that employee. For the upcoming year, we anticipate a continuation of the trend health, of healthcare costs upward. Recent contractual negotiations, we have worked with the unions and have been able to negotiate higher employee health contributions for new employees as they progress through their career at the village. Although the higher contributions do improve village expenses, this is an area the village will continue to look at in an effort to control the ever-increasing costs. Next couple of slides, public safety, police, fire, and building, building department. It's one of the largest components of every municipal budget, with the expense primarily reflected in personnel costs and employee benefits. Non-property taxes such as sales tax collections continue to be the village's major revenue source other than the tax levy. Recent increases in the sales tax rate have proven to be a real benefit for the village. And again, this year, we anticipate approximately $3.5 million in non-property tax collections. The trend of revenues and expenditures continues upward. Personnel costs, once again, are a large portion of the increase because of contractual cost of living adjustments and increasing cost of employee benefits. Again, we continue to work to contain all expenditures within the village. This slide illustrates the distribution of property taxes within the village. The largest portion of your tax bill continues to be the school district taxes at roughly 68% of your total property taxes. Village provided services such as the police department, snow removal, and garbage removal, meaning at approximately 21% of your total tax bill. The next two slides show how the general fund's unreserved fund balance has been pending for the, excuse me, trending for the past 16 years. Unreserved fund balance is, in essence, the village's savings account for unforeseen circumstances that can occur. The village will continue to work hard to keep the unreserved fund balance at a reasonable level in an effort to ensure that we provide the highest level of service to the residents of Dobbs Ferry at the best possible costs. New York State monitors all local governments and school districts' financial condition to ensure that they are fiscally sound. The village continues to be in an excellent financial condition and has scored very well on the state's fiscal stress test, including a score of zero for the '22, '23 fiscal year. At this time, we're still waiting on the results for '23, '24. But for the past 10-plus years, the village has been nowhere near fiscally stressed, according to the matrix created by the state. And we feel that the proposed 2526 budget will allow the village to continue a strong financial condition going forward. So in summary, we have proposed a budget that is once again in compliance with New York State's tax levy cap. Tax rate decreases to $6.66 per thousand dollars of assessed value, with another increase of, in taxable assessed value, and an increase in expenditures of approximately 3.21%. We have been able to maintain a strong fund balance, and we see the villages, and we see this in the village Moody's rating of AA2, what amounts to the highest rating a municipality of this size can attain, and a continued excellent score on New York State's fiscal stress test. That said, there are future concerns that we must continue to keep an eye on noted on this slide. Our goal is to provide the highest level of service to the residents of Dobbs Ferry at the best possible cost, and we feel that this budget does that. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jeff, for all your continuing hard work. Thank you, Rob, for also, and thank you to the heads of the departments also for putting in reasonable requests this year, and it's always a tough choice that the Board of Trustees have to make in deciding what, we wish we could have proved everything and go forward with everything, but it's a tough balancing act for us, and I want to thank the village administrator and the village treasurer for all their work. Does anybody on the board have anything they want to ask? No. Anybody in the public have anything they want to ask? Is there anybody online that wants to ask? Okay. So, that's great. So the next step would be to keep this open and adjourn it to the next meeting, and then we can actually vote on the budget. Is that correct?
Mayor, you actually have a choice to, to actually close the public hearing tonight or continue it through the next meeting. We haven't received any other comments as well, so that's a choice as well. So you can extend it for another two weeks to the next meeting or, or close the public hearing?
It's fine. We'll keep it open because we're going to vote on the budget next time anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll just keep it open. So I have to make a motion to adjourn this to the next meeting, is that correct?
April 22nd, yeah.
All right. So is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing until the next meeting of April 22nd, 2025? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Patino, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for everything that they've done on this. Next item is courtesy of the floor. Anybody here for courtesy of the floor? Come on up. Wait.
Hi, my name is Paul.
Go, Paula, go to the mic.
If you can.
Tell us who you are, where you live, and why you're wearing a boot on your foot.
Paula McCarthy. I live at Four Grove Street, Dobbs Ferry. Lived in Dobbs Ferry my whole life. With me tonight is Frank Farrington. Both of us born and raised in Dobbs Ferry. We're here on behalf of the Dobbs Ferry American Legion. Our main concern is the property at 25 Palisade Street. I just want to give a little quick history because I know our time is limited. Memorial Park is called Memorial Park because that land was donated to the village of Dobbs Ferry, and there was a stipulation in there that there was to be a place for the American Legion veterans that came home during World War II. The original building there, the foundation was built, that white building that stood there was moved from Broadway. It was the original one schools, one-room schoolhouse in Dobbs Ferry and was moved down there. Okay? We've been going through a lot, we know, over the last 11 years with trying to resurrect the building. A couple, maybe a year or so ago, there was a discussion, as trustee Patino said, about moving us into the old Memorial Park building. I could stop right there if that was a possibility, because then that building that the property was dedicated for and donated specifically, specifically for would have a building for the veterans in that park area. There are restrictions for that property also. That's another whole discussion and so forth. But if the Memorial Park building does not work out, we had a meeting the other day, five of us from the American Legion, and we met with the building, with the building inspector, excuse me, with Bob, the-
Village Administrator-
Yes.
And the mayor.
Administrator, got nervous.
Thank you.
Okay? And Frank would like to explain a little bit of what we had come up with as a possible idea for that building.
Sure. Thank you. Frank Farrington, 89 Ashford Avenue. To piggyback off of what she said, and I think I kind of heard the sentiment here tonight to us, the number one priority is finally doing something. And I'll share an example, which is maybe kind of a drawing on a napkin, not necessarily set in stone, but to give you guys an idea that we want to work lockstep with the village. We think it's high time. But we had an idea that I think can serve the, the greater community, and there's several of us on the, the board for the American Legion that are also parents and coaches of young kids, and that's sort of a separate issue, but certainly kind of attached at the hip that our kids don't really have enough space, they don't have enough fields, maybe gyms. I know that was discussed tonight, but we want to propose an idea that if a structure of any kind is put down in the former American Legion space, that we help fund, sponsor, work on a portion of the building that is a kitchen, concession stand, and bathrooms that could be served for the greater community, that the kids can go inside to use the restroom, they can buy a hot dog from a structure, not a shed. But again, that's just an example of the fact that we want to work in tandem with you all to make sure something is finally realized. So whatever we have to do going forward, whether that's part of the, the NYF grant, I know it was discussed, maybe this is a separate issue down the line, whatever that is, we want to be a part of it. I think it's been, what, 14 years at the building?
11 years. 11 years on February 14th.
And like she said, we grew up here, things changed, that building, I was in that many times. We don't have any delusions that the exact structure or that one-room schoolhouse, we're going to rebuild it exactly as is, but we do know the history behind it, it was to honor the veterans. I still serve, so it is my responsibility on behalf of the other veterans to make sure that they're taken care of. I mean, whether or not I want to all the time, it is my, my duty, I have to. So we're going to be here, please call us, email us, tell us when another meeting is. We want to make sure something is realized that honors the veterans, but certainly gives the kids something to, to look forward to, whether it's a field, court, whatever that is, we, we want to be part of this. So, thank you.
Thank you both for what you're doing, and I, and we did meet last week, and the Board of Trustees is committed to finding a space for you guys, whether it be, as trustee Patino said, maybe in the memorial current rep building or a new structure that we build, but we definitely want to have permanent space for you. I don't know what it's going to look like, or how long it's going to take, but you are, as you heard today when we were discussing, that you look forward, Grant, you are part of the plans.
Perfect.
So stay involved, keep coming down, meeting with us, and we'll make this work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Scott Hansen. I work closely with the teachers at Dobbs Ferry High School, who oversee the International Baccalaureate or IB program at the school, and a big part of the IB diploma requirement is volunteer hours that students have to do, where they have to engage themselves in a part of the community in which they've never been engaged before, try something new, learn something new, et cetera, et cetera. Another huge part of it, maybe the biggest part, is that juniors have to undertake a, a project, and that project is sort of a, a long-term project over the course of a month or so, in which they engage themselves in a certain service to the community, and they only have a limited time window in which to do this, and it, by the end of junior year, that has to be done by, I think, May 31st, or else they don't get the IB diploma. So in working with those students, I have a, a student here with me who's going to speak right after me. This is Delbar, and she is, is engaging in a project that she's approached, you know, the, the mayor and the village administrator about and is trying to get some traction. If she can't do this project, she needs to switch to another one, but I wanted to support her here as she speaks to you guys, that this is also part of community engagement, doing something you've never done before in your community, so I thought it was a nice idea to have her come and speak to you all tonight. So thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Delbar Afshar. Thank you so much for the introduction for the CAS project. I emailed Mayor Rosillo and Village Administrator Yamater on March 8th about my proposed CAS project about installing a little free library at the waterfront park. Just to summarize what a little free library is, these are little decorated cabinets on a post which children and adults use as a place for a free book exchange, and also you can take a book to keep and also exchange one to the box, so everyone can enjoy a new book or just look for new things to read. Currently, from the tracker that the organization has, the Little Free Library Organization, there are three of these boxes at the Dobbs, at Dobbs Ferry. One is at Palisades Avenue, Broadway and Walnut Street. However, it's great that we have three of these already in the Dobbs Ferry community. However, these locations are not easily seen or accessible to the general public, and I think it would be a great idea to have one at the waterfront park, where many community members gather for events and activities. I received a reply on March 13th with the mayor, thinking it would be a great idea. However, the next few stages were location and maintenance of the box. I was told that the village staff would get back to me to discuss these issues so I can get started on my CAS project. I haven't heard back from them yet, but I do have ideas for where the location would be and where the maintenance would happen. First of all, the location I had in mind for the little free library would be to place near the playground, so children could read books by the river where, when taking a break from the playground. Many families pass through this area, so it would be a great opportunity for families to encourage their, their children to read more for their own enjoyment. Regarding future maintenance, I would be glad to maintain it until I graduate. After I graduate, the plan could be that I could get assistance from either the Dobbs Ferry Public Library in this regular teen volunteer group, or with assistance from one of the scout troops in the village. Recently, I have been in contact with the friends of Waterfront, Waterfront Park, which, as you may know, is a nonprofit dedicated to improving the park. They already thought the project was a great idea. I'm actually meeting with them on Sunday to discuss the project further, to see if there's any way that they could help me out for future maintenance once I graduate. And also, I would like to clarify again, I am on a tight timeline to complete my CAS project, which is rapidly running out. Currently, I just need like the next few steps of whether this is approved, so I can move forward and hopefully complete it in time by May 31st. Yeah, that's it. Thank you so much for your time. Please let me know if there are any additional steps of, that I need to take care of, so I can get this project approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And as I responded to you, I thought it was a great idea, and I still think it's a great idea. I had asked the village staff to get involved in working it out, so I don't know if anyone from the village staff has, evidently they haven't worked it out with you, correct?
Yeah.
So what could we tell her that we're going to do for her?
Apologize if we didn't get back to you. I think I was away that week, but I probably had a bunch of emails, no excuse. If, I'll give you my card, we can talk about the details about the materials and locations. I'll be happy to, to set up a meeting as soon as possible.
Why don't we do this? What, what time do you finish school tomorrow?
Um, I finish school around 2:30, 2:30.
Okay. So can you do a phone call with the village administrator? Is, are you, like, 3 o'clock tomorrow?
I'll make myself available.
Okay. So he's going to give you his phone number, you can call him at 3 o'clock tomorrow, and we can move forward on it.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
I love this idea, and I have books to donate.
Oh, well, good, good. Me all the. Okay.
Go ahead. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. We want to see it, we want to see pictures of it when it's done, so congratulations.
Of course.
We'll do a ribbon cutting even. So he'll give you his card, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can lower it. Somehow, whether you can lower it. There you go.
There we go. My name is Morgan McEwen. I'm also going to speak in regards to the, the waterfront park as well, and I'm, I'm here to ask for a letter of support for a New York Foundation for the Arts grant application that's due on April 15th. Again, my name is Morgan McEwen. I'm the artistic director and founder of More Dance, a professional ballet company that was founded in 2014 in New York City and relocated to Westchester County 15 months ago. I personally moved to the River Towns in 2018 while I was still dancing for the Metropolitan Opera, and I was always blown away by the fact that if I wanted to see professional caliber dance, I had to drive back into the city to see it. And I was determined to change that by bringing my company up here to Westchester County. More Dance was founded to reimagine what ballet can be. We are a trailblazing company that uses dance to spark civic dialogue, champion social and environmental justice, and build meaningful connections between people and place. We break down barriers that have historically made ballet feel inaccessible, and instead opened our doors wide, offering free and low-cost performances, education programs, and immersive, community-rooted experiences. We invite audiences into our process, host open rehearsals, and create opportunities where art is not just something to watch, but something to feel, to question, and connect with deeply. I am here to ask for a letter of support on a project that embodies our mission. More Dance is applying for an anonymous, was-a-woman environmental artist grant from the New York Foundation for the Arts for a work that we intend to expand called Riverbound. It is ballet inspired by the power, legacy, and ecology of the Hudson River. We want to expand this work into an evening-length piece with live music. We envision presenting this performance and a portion of its creative development right here in Dobbs Ferry at the waterfront park in July of 2026. This will be a week-long, free, public event featuring open rehearsals that offer the community a window into our creative process. The week will culminate in a powerful, full-length performance with a panel discussion by our artists, and this is all designed to spark conversation, deepen collective understanding of the Hudson River's role in our shared history, environment, and identity. Riverbound is more than just a performance, it is a catalyst for connection, reflection, and civic pride. As part of our application, we are asking for a letter of support from the village of Dobbs Ferry. We are not asking for any financial backing, just your endorsement for this project, which will greatly strengthen our case for this prestigious arts grant and help bring this project to life here in Dobbs Ferry. Thank you so much for your time and your dedication to the community and bringing arts and culture here to the River Towns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before you go-
Yeah.
-tell us, do you have dates set for that in July?
I, we, we can be flexible, and we would need a rain date, of course, but, but the, the idea would be that we would, you know, bring in a stage, put it up, you know, on the river and have a week of open rehearsals. Again, we can be flexible with availability of the park. I know it gets rented to other people. We are over a year away, so I'm hoping that the, the park isn't too booked up in July. Obviously, July 4th is probably out, but-
That is out for sure. But are you saying that, in, in your head, I know it's, it's early, are you saying during the day, at night?
So we would do our open rehearsal period during the day. You know, our normal rehearsal days are from 9:00 to, to 4:30. We, we, you know, again, heat in July, we'd probably try to be a little earlier, although dancers and musicians don't love getting up early in the morning, but we, we try to be earlier in the day for the rehearsal portion, and then a performance we'd probably do, you know, 7:30 on, you know, a Friday or Saturday evening, but again, you know, we can be flexible and work with the town on, on what works best for you guys.
Okay. So I think this has to go to the Parks and Rec committee. I know you're under a gun to get this done, so we'd like to get a letter at least for you.
Yeah.
But then, I don't know.
I would suggest, as someone who works at the county and often gets requests for letters of support, I would suggest you write the letter.
I, I have-
That was my next thing.
Drafted that I can email you tonight.
But also, it'll, it'll ensure that it has all the points in it that are necessary for the grant. It can be-
Yeah.
As people see fit, but this way, you know, I, I've seen too many things where, where people don't hit all the points-
The bullets, when it needs to be, yeah. I can, who should I send my already drafted letter to?
Send it to the village administrator with a C C to me.
Okay, perfect.
Okay?
Please, I, I saw a draft of the letter, was like fill-in-the-blank kind of thing.
Yeah.
So if that's the same one, I'll be happy to distribute it, just received it.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. How do you feel as far as the liaison to the Parks and Rec? What do you think the next step should be?
Kendra's here, but it, it is something that would have to go to the Recreation Commission that actually met last night.
Right.
Ironically. So I'm sure we could circulate it over email and get a feel for it. What do you think, Kendra?
For the record, Kendra's shaking her head, yes. Okay. So why don't we work together with Rob, and then we can move forward with it for you, okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
I know that they'll ask, I don't know what's in your stuff, but they always ask, like, the number of people, you know, is there going to be, you know, DPW usage, is there going to be music, is it, you know, speakers, are you planning on tents, like what, the logistics are?
Okay.
Is there the, there's a form for the waterfront park?
Okay.
And you can answer those questions in the email.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Perfect.
But I think it sounds like a fantastic idea.
Yeah.
I would love for it to take place in Dobbs Ferry.
Thank you.
So I think, like, the overall sentiment is that we would love for this to work out, and I think the more detail you give us, the less questions the Rec Commission will have, and the sooner you can-
That's right.
Our grant application is ready to go, and you can only imagine the detail in that grant application, so you will have all of the details tomorrow. Perfect.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Action item number one. Is there a motion to authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding related to the Community Choice Aggregate Program? So before we make that motion, let's, we were supposed to talk a little bit about this at the workshop portion of the meeting, and we didn't. So, Rob, you could help fill in some of the blanks, but last meeting, we had a presentation made by Sustainable Westchester, and they indicated that they would like a commitment earlier than they normally would get to forward with it, hoping that they can get a better price when it comes to our energy. So a little bit of background, Dobbs Ferry is one of, I think, 27 communities or so that belong- 27 communities or so that belong to a consortium that's managed by Sustainable Westchester. And as a result of that, we use renewable energy as our number-one option. People have the right to opt out of that, and I think Sustainable Westchester makes it very simple to opt out of that. But that would be, because of our action, the residents of Dobbs Ferry are automatically enrolled in the Sustainable Westchester option, which means that your, energy is gotten from a renewable source. I think we have to, A, decide if we want to go forward with it, and B, decide if we want to do 50% or 100% renewable clean power. And I think they would like an answer as soon as possible. Is that correct?
Uh, by April 19th, which is before the next meeting. That's why they're, uh, they're asking us to make a decision tonight, if possible.
Okay, so let's just discuss it before we actually vote on it. So what are people's thoughts about?
What do we have now? Do we have 50 or 100?
100.
I believe it's 100.
I believe it's 100 now.
It's 100. Yes.
Thoughts, anyone?
And what is the actual upshot of 50 versus 100?
I think it's a cheaper, cheaper, yeah, I don't have, and I'm like, they don't have that, because they can only give us historical when it was.
Historically.
Well, we had that in last week's presentation. I don't have it in front of me, we had it in last...
No, we had it last time, so I mean, historically, it, it went up when Russia invaded Ukraine and that affected the food source. Everything right now is insane, and there's a public hearing that was happening today about ConEdison. You know, so much of what we pay as consumers are delivery charges. Uh, but the, the difference with this is that we're talking about using renewable energy, and, um, it may not be cheaper every single time, but in the long run, it's, it's more of a philosophy. If people don't agree with it, they can opt out, and they could have regular... But I, I personally think if we're gonna do it, then we should stick with 100% and, and be committed to it.
I think it's also important to note that, that anybody who has previously opted out is not suddenly opted back in by this decision. If you once opted out, you're always out, unless you proactively ask back in.
You could opt out or in any time.
Right.
So Matt, just, Matt, what are your thoughts as far as 50% or 100%?
I support 100%. Let's not do things halfway.
Kristi?
I am concerned about the ability to opt out and how easy and clear it is for people to do so. And I know, as somebody who is in the day-to-day of everything with the village, I, I understand that you can opt out, but I don't think it's as easy as everyone thinks it is. And so that is, by default, charging the most, the highest rate for a fantastic reason, and I want renewable energy and all of that. But I feel like the, the cost of living is so expensive up here for us to assume that people are under, like, are aware and able to opt out. I would say that 50% is, is a more fair option for all of the people of Dobbs Ferry, because it is so easy that you can opt in. So if it's that easy, then all of the people who are paying attention can then go change and opt into 100%.
Well, I just want to say, I think it's, yeah, I think...
They can't opt into 100% if we have decided on 50%.
Right, so if we've locked into 50%, they can't do 100. And I do disagree that I, I think it's very easy to opt out. You may say that people aren't aware, and that it's their...
Sorry, I didn't, that's not really what I meant. You're right. It's the fact that they're not aware that is the thing. It comes in the mail, as much as they try, it looks like junk mail, because it's very hard to distinguish between, because junk mail people are so good at making junk mail.
That's true.
So, it comes in the mail, I never know. I mean, I have a hard time recognizing whether or not it's real. So I know it's not communicated easy, because of all the reasons. We can barely communicate with people. It's very difficult to communicate with people about this topic. And, but you can't opt in, that changes everything.
We could put it back to the newsletter, you know, to advise people. If we opted in, and if they want to opt out, you can either email or call.
Can, can there be a link in the newsletter for people who want to do that? I mean, does it have to be a paper version? Why, why can't this be?
We can do it online, by email, or by email.
So, why don't we provide the link and just continue to do that?
We can do 100% and do a standalone email that's very simple, that has a button to opt out. I mean, it has to be extremely clear and simple, and that would be what I would require.
I think all we could do is provide a link to Sustainable Westchester, where you could opt out.
That's, that's what she's saying, like, I think, and I also think we can commit, and we now have a little bit more infrastructure for committing to having a communications plan around this, which we haven't had historically. And we can put together a roadmap that says like, you know, a month before this goes into effect, we start talking about it, and here's where we're talking about it. And we put an ad in the dispatch, or we, we try to pitch a story to the dispatch so that they can, um, you know, explain it. We want to understand, you know, not everyone gets our emails, so they're gonna get it mailed to 100% of all customers. Of course, some percentage of people won't, won't get it, or will assume it's junk. I completely agree, Kristi. Every, you know, we can put it on Facebook, we can put it in the email multiple times. We can have a standalone email. I think we can do a much better job of communicating on the front end and continuing to communicate, rather than, you know, if, if our, if this is what we want to do, we should do this and meet our goals with other strategies that help us meet those goals, including making sure that anyone who would like to opt out has that opportunity to know that that's an option and how to do it as simply as possible. And I also think, in terms of the price, Kristi, just to, to put a slightly finer point on what you said, it's not the most expensive necessarily every time. It is more expensive, 100 is more expensive than 50, but the rates from ConEd fluctuate more, and this is a more fixed price. So, it's not necessarily the case that it's more expensive to do this every single month. So it's not like we're automatically opting everyone into a baseline.
No, just in the past two years.
Yeah, right, right. And I also want to say for the record, that this is about the energy supply costs and not the delivery costs. And the delivery costs stay whatever ConEd decides they are, which is another huge can of worms that's being discussed at the state level right now. And if you're curious about that, the dispatch has been doing a great job of covering all of that. And the village sent out an email today about the fact that we're joining a consortium to try to convince ConEd to not go to that level. So that is a separate issue. So we're only talking about the supply charges, and we're talking about a, a more fixed rate than what, what someone would have if they were automatically opted in to the ConEd more fluctuating rates, which, as we've seen with global events, can fluctuate pretty tremendously.
Right, absolutely. And I also just want to say, we've already been doing this. So this isn't something new that, that we're doing. We've been doing this, it's just a question of are we gonna keep doing it? So, um, if, if, there's been opportunities for, for people to have questions, opt in or opt out for the past few years. Um, and I think that right now, it's become a big discussion, as Trustee Galen said, because the, you know, the ConEd charges are really, the county's fighting it, we're fighting it, all the municipalities are fighting it. Um, and it's the same way when you look at your tax bill and you see what percentage are village taxes, what percentage are county taxes, what percentage are school taxes. You, you will see, if you look at your electric bill, that what has gone up substantially is the delivery charges.
Okay, based upon what I've heard, I think I'm going to make this motion with the 100% option and go from there. So, I don't think anyone actually voted on the motion yet, or even put it up forward yet. So let me just say this. Is there a motion to authorize the Board of Trustees to authorize the village administrator to execute the 2025 MOU with Sustainable Westchester selecting the 100% renewable clean power product as the default? Trustee Rosen Asher, second, Trustee Patino, all in favor? That, all against? All abstaining?
Oh, I just don't know. Can you really not opt in? Is that a fact?
You can opt in, but only to the program that we have selected, which is, per this motion, the 100% plan. You don't, you don't get to individually choose which plan you want to, uh, you want to participate in.
It's, it's, they call it, it's just by default. If that's the way the village goes, that's the default. It could be changed from that, whatever that default is.
The default is, it can be changed from whatever the default is.
It can be changed to opting out. I don't believe it can be changed to another plan. Are, am I wrong about that, Rob?
I agree, I think, I think you're right.
You can't just either this plan or the...
Opt out. We have six votes, Kristi, so...
I'll just abstain, because I don't, I want to know that for sure.
You're abstaining?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, make a note of that. Next item is to schedule a public hearing to consider a local law amending the zoning code to revise the tree preservation provisions. I think we had a presentation on the proposed changes with regard to the trees at a prior workshop, and I think we're ready to move forward with this. And, and in order to do that, we have to schedule a public hearing so that people can have the opportunity to, um, speak to their thoughts about what we're intending to do. We will certainly go over what the intentions are, and it'll be in the agenda coming up at the next meeting. So is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for May 13th, 2025, to consider a local law amending the zoning code to revise the tree preservation provisions? Trustee Patino, second, Trustee Galen, all in favor? That passes unanimously, so the public hearing will be held at that time. Action item number three. Is there a motion to authorize a village cleanup day for Saturday, April 26th, 2025, which will be hosted by the Beautification Committee with the DPW assisting with their providing materials? Not actually cleaning it up, I don't think, right? They'll be there, just a garbage bag, so, okay. And we appreciate the Beautification Committee's efforts to do that, and everyone, it's always a great event. And it's from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday, April 26th, 2025. So is there a motion to authorize that day? Trustee Galen, Trustee Rosenberg, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Is there a motion to extend the snow and ice contract with the New York State Department of Transportation? This is a agreement that we enter into every year. This year, um, it had previously gone, gone from July 1st, 2019, and ended June 30th, 2024, so we want to keep that going. So, is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute any documentation?
I have a question about this before we go forward. Um, this is for Stephen Treza. Um, have you, i- is there a discussion locally about the report of salts, uh, you know, sort of the overuse of salts and its effect on drinking water? And is there some kind of thought or plan about how we might use different products, less product, um, so that we can start to address that issue? Okay.
So we should do that on a village level, for sure, you're right. So the, I, the salt that we get, that you use, you, it's not part of this, is it?
Our salt.
Right, it's our salt. Right, right, so that I think you're getting to, maybe we should look at what we use forward, right?
Yeah, I mean, i- if I'm not mistaken, we, we're purchasing salts. Like, we're, we're just renewing a contract for how we purchase salt, correct? Quantity, the cost per unit, et cetera?
No, this is actually, this is a mutual agreement, the five-year agreement that we have with the state on the state roads. Basically, they're reimb, they're reimbursing us for maintaining the, the salting of the roads.
Okay.
So it's the 16,000 that it was for five years. We've opted because things are more expensive. So it's not the actual buying of the salt. This is just us doing the maintenance on their roads, they get, we get reimbursement.
So it's a, and, and how that maintenance occurs is provided to our DPW by another...
Right, it's, it's our stock of salt that they pay us back to.
Yeah, but we're required to do a certain thing for the maintenance of that road. Is that right?
Right, well... Right, it's not per se the drinking water. It's, it's actually just the, the stormwater.
There was just a huge story that came out about, um, the reservoir being polluted and rendering it unpotable within a couple of decades if the level of salt, um, continues to be used at its current rate. So I think that's what, um, Trustee Patino is probably referring to. So I think there's probably a question that we can answer at another time about what materials are we using, and should we have a policy of moving to sand or something else?
Right.
But it sounds like, I guess the question would just be, if we moved to sand, would we be in violation of this contract?
Maybe a conversation for, maybe we have to gather some more information. I just wanted to ask the question while it's on our agenda, and Stephen's here. Are you thinking about it? If you're not, can you start thinking about it? I totally understand that, but I also want to have drinking water. So some, some, some intermediary solution...
I mean, my guess is other people are looking at this too, so maybe we can, um...
Just out of curiosity, how many years, how, how much salt do we, we have a huge amount of salt. How many, is that a year's worth, two years' worth, six months' worth?
What, the watershed?
Yeah. Right, but... And you get, and you get it from a private place, or you get it from the...
We'll get it from, I have salt, but it's a state contract.
State contract, okay. So I do think we should address that, you're right. I don't think this addresses that.
But if we, would we be in violation of this agreement? Like, I don't know what's in this agreement, so, anyway. Perhaps the village administrator can help us answer some of those questions.
I'll be, I'll be happy to look into it. I know there are alternatives, like, uh, believe it or not, some, some municipalities in the Midwest or that don't have, the problems we have, they, they actually use like a, a saline solution. It's, it's actually, uh, it's mixed with water, so it actually, there's different chemical compounds. So there are alternatives, I'll be happy to look further into that.
So I think the, the question is, though, if we do move to a different agent, would be in violation of this agreement? So I think that, I think we have to check that out. Maybe you or Laura Lee could check that out, and maybe since there's no urgency to this, we could table it to the next time and get an answer for that.
Maybe we should also check to see if our... Maybe we should also check to see if our runoff actually goes into the watershed. I mean, I think, when I read that article, it was, it was speaking more locally about runoff up near the reservoir.
Right.
Whether, whether ours drains, you know, stormwater drains into the Hudson, which is brackish to begin with, would, you know, our contribution to the, the potential, you know, fouling of the, the reservoir is, like, is, is unknown to us right now, and is unknown based on, unknown to the, you know, based on what was in that article.
But, but salt, whatever. We should look at the salt question, and probably the county is looking into this, would be my guess, given this research that just came out. So maybe we could reach out to the county and see if there's any initiative to move the surrounding areas to the reservoir to a different substance. And if there is, if it's more environmentally friendly, we should move to it, regardless of whether, you know, the watershed is particularly affected by our salt use, if it's equally, if, it's an equally effective solution.
Okay, so we're gonna table this motion to get those answers. So action item number five. Is there a motion to close the offices at Village Hall?
I mean, are you gonna table up, get those answers, or are you gonna... When does that define by, or just...
I, I actually have the contracts here that, uh, Rhea Mallett is taking a quick look at.
Okay, if she can figure it out in the next 15 minutes, we can...
No pressure.
I was wondering if it was something we were gonna figure out in the next two months. We should just sign it and deal with it for next year.
It's a five-year contract. So, we're tabling it for now, and if we can get an answer before the end of the day, that would be great. Okay, we can?
Yeah.
So is there a motion to close the offices at Village Hall, Department of Public Works, and Village Court on Friday, May 9th, 2025, for Records Management Day? Trustee Rosen Asher, second, Trustee Patino, all in favor? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept a grant funding from the Greater Irvington Land Trust to commit additional village funding to build a permanent fence for the Pollinator Garden in Chauncey Park?
Can we have, we have some, uh, members here?
Yeah, I know, just going to, so, yeah. Okay. You guys want to come up and explain it further, or would you rely on Trustee Patino to explain it?
Loaded question.
I, please.
I want to thank you, first of all, for following up on that and getting the grant. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm, again, Matthew Scott Hansen.
David Duarte.
And we're both from the Conservation Advisory Board.
And so thank you for approving for us to apply for the grant. We got part of the funds that we discussed at the time. You know, we, we were given permission to apply for the maximum. And we had a feeling that we weren't going to get it all because they divided it. You may have read the article in the dispatch. They divided it amongst several different groups around the towns. And so we've at least received the grant. We have to officially apply accepting the grant. That's step one. And step two is they've sent us invoice instructions. If we do want to receive that money, that we have to send them an invoice. So I think I forwarded that, that stuff on as well. So the, the remainder of the money is, is what we're also, I saw was also in the draft, the proposal that you guys put up there. But just as a reminder, Chauncey Park, as you guys may remember, it's near Mom's Organic Market now. It was a Woodlands once upon a time and it had a trail going through it. It has a huge, you know, rock pile on it now and we're trying to revitalize it. We have the New York State parcel adjacent to it that we're trying to incorporate into the village to make one huge, the second largest park in Dobbs Ferry after Druring Preserve, if we should get it. And then sort of relaunch it. So we've been working with the National Park Service. And the, we have a small makeshift pollinator garden already at the trailhead, but it's falling down. It's made with, you know, little bits of his stuff and little bits of my stuff. We just weeded it out for the, for the season to start it. We got permission from the Danforth Department Building to attach a hose to their spigot. So they've allowed us, we donated hose. So we watered it. It did really well this past year. But it's, it's small and we wanted to make it sort of the signature arrival thing that you see when you, when you come to that new park before we relaunch it on the website, republizize it and hopefully incorporate it into the state.
And the cost of the, of the fence was $4,300, right?
Yeah.
And you've gotten a grant for $2,000.
That's right.
So our limit, our involvement would be $2,300.
That's right.
Right. So again, we want to thank you for taking the time to do all that. So thank you. Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Where do you enter it?
So when you go to Mom's Organic Market, if you're at the corner, it's a 90-degree corner. And you look to your left, you see an industrial construction site access road.
Right.
That is, that was in fact, that was, you know, that's, that's preservation land that's village property where, where it was allowed to be used to, to drive mining dump trucks up there to dump the boulders from the construction project into the woods. And so there's a pedestrian bridge and a trail that's built around the 50-foot tall rock pile. But you, you enter the park there, the sign is gone. We found it at one stage. I think I emailed you guys a photo of it. I think trustee Rosenberg remembers the sign from his old days. We propped it up again. We found it buried under a pile of rocks. We propped it up again and a week later it was stolen. Maybe it's on some, you know, teenager's, you know, wall in their dorm room. I don't know, but.
Bring it back. If you have it, put the sign back.
We want to, you know, we want to re-sign it. We want to relaunch it. And the National Park Service has some consultants working with us to help, you know, publicize it. But it's all sort of contingent upon having something good to show and we don't yet have that. So we're, we're working on it.
Thank you so much.
I do think a sign will be helpful because it does seem, I know people walk, I live near there, but I know there are people who like, where is this park?
I lived there and I didn't know about the park.
You lived at the Danforth and you didn't know where it was?
Beautiful, beautiful.
It's a really nice lot.
They never told me that. I feel like they should be promoting it.
We planted 450 trees down by the Solmo Parkway there too, with various New York State Department of Environmental Conservation projects. And so we're, we're again, we're trying to, trying to do it step by step. We can't do it all at once. We've spread 45 trucks of wood chips along the top with the help of the DPW. Want to spread some more to make topsoil up there. But it's a, it's a multi-stage project, but this would be the sort of signature entry point.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to accept the grant funding from the Greater Irvington Land Trust and committing additional village funding to build a permanent fence for the pollinator garden in Chauncey Park? Trustee Patino, second trustee Galen, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Again, the village would be committing $2,300. The grant is $2,000. And we want to thank the Greater Irvington Land Trust for their donation. And we also appreciate the efforts of our CAB for what they've done. So thank you. Is there a motion to approve the audit of claims as submitted and recommended by the village treasurer? Trustee Galen, second trustee Patino, all in favor? That passes unanimously. I have two other items to add to the agenda. So I need a motion to add a resolution approving temporary signage on village property to encourage kindergarten registration at Dobbs Ferry School District. Is there a motion? Trustee Galen, second trustee Nell, all in favor? That's now added to the agenda. Now we could vote on that. So is there a motion to approve the temporary signage on village property to encourage kindergarten registration at Dobbs Ferry School District? The signs, by the way, will be 24 inches by 18 inches. They'll be placed on traffic islands located on Northfield Avenue and Ashford Avenue, Broadway and Livingston Avenue. Trustee Patino, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor? That passes unanimously. I now need a motion to add a resolution authorizing the village administrator to administer, village administrator to execute the Con Edison Interconnection Agreement for solar installation at the DPW building. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda? Trustee Patino, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor? That's now added to the agenda. And this would allow us to, to install. This allows us to, I don't have that motion.
Yeah, this basically, for Honeywell, they already have the equipment out there to put the, the solar panels on the DPW roof. This was the agreement that Con Ed agreed to, that there's no utility work, that that needs to be done, that we can kick back five, up to five megawatts of power from the solar panels back into the system. So this is the inter, the interconnection agreement to, to make that happen. So I spoke to Honeywell today and they said, that's, that's the New York State standardized form appendix A that you were looking at, just to, to move ahead to make that interconnection, which Con Ed already signed off on.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute the Con Edison Interconnection Agreement for solar installation at the DPW building? Oh, Matt, you got a question?
No, I'd like to make a motion, move this along.
His hand was up early. I'm sorry.
Okay, trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Galen, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
Okay, so we're done. So is there any reports from trustee Galen?
The library board had a fantastic meeting last week. They're really cooking with some really cool new reporting ideas on their successes and also, you know, they have their heads up about potential funding cuts from the federal government to the IMLS, which are principal library services, funding and trying to get creative about, you know, staying afloat and continuing to offer really high-quality programming to the village.
Okay, trustee Sullivan?
No, I just want to recognize that the REC Commission had sent us a letter regarding their, you know, list of priorities for the New York Forward Grant that I think everybody received. And they've been working really hard to come up with a plan for different REC facilities and moving different projects forward. So I just want to thank them.
Trustee Patino?
I'd, I'd just like to, on behalf of the CAB, remind the board that we are, we sort of, we committed to a dear management plan for the upcoming year. And now is the time to get, get that started again. And so I'd like to, you know, just for us to have that conversation, figure out how we're going to move forward with that.
Yeah, so Rob, if we can make a note of that to put that on a.
Yeah, we penciled that in for the next meeting, 22nd.
Great, okay. Trustee Rosen Asher?
The Human Rights and Diversity Committee is preparing a report to the, to the board on the listening circles that were done. They're also preparing for celebrations for Juneteenth. Typically, we have been involved with the celebration at Children's Village. I hope that will continue again. It's usually the Friday before when Juneteenth is, so I'm not looking at a calendar, but. And then Pride is June 28th down at the waterfront. We could use more members for that committee. So I urge anyone that has an interest in human rights and diversity, especially now, to apply through the nominating committee to, to be on that committee. And they also have a student intern who'll be working on some projects and that's been working out very well for them. That's it.
Trustee Rosenberg?
I have nothing, but will be enjoying a traffic committee meeting tomorrow and an affordable housing task force meeting on Thursday. And the public is invited to attend each according to their interests.
Okay, trustee Nell?
From Sustainable Dobbs, they are putting together information on gas leaf blowers for us to be thinking about and considering. So look forward to that in an upcoming workshop. We have some changes that we could be doing to align better and potentially lead the way in outlawing them in Dobbs Ferry and being, doing what our neighbors are doing so that it's less confusing for all of the people doing maintenance work on their lawns. And I have a question about shuttle support. But I think for the downtown committee in relation to Phoenisha Flea and other events. But I will circle back on that with Rob Yumuter.
Do you want to just mention the Wickers Creek, Christie?
I do. Wickers Creek Market is coming up. Wickers Creek, I'm Googling the date.
April 27th, it's a Sunday.
Yes, April 27th, Sunday, April 27th. A vintage and antique market at the waterfront. It's going to be amazing. Everybody should be super excited and following them on their website, wickers creek market dot com.
Okay, is there anything else by anybody? Okay, if there's nothing further, is there a motion to end tonight's meeting? Trustee Galen, second trustee Patino, all in favor?